All right, moving on. I think we're ready to start the continuation of public hearing for 8:45 Boston Post Road. Does anybody here? Is the applicant here? Yep. There's your architect.
Joel and I had some late afternoon -- well, you should open the case.
Yeah. Are you, are you it?
I am it. I'm Mr. Wright, the architect representing Tim Scott and Mary Graves.
All right, I haven't opened it yet. Just a second.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so we're opening the hearing for, the continuing hearing for 8:45 Boston Post Road. Please go ahead.
Okay. Sorry.
Can we just clarify?
Yes.
Sorry, my bad.
I'm done with that.
At the last board meeting, there was discussion as to whether the applicant was taking the right protocol in terms of this particular property. This particular property is 3.3 acres of land. It's landlocked. It's basically an island in the middle of town conservation land. There was some question as to whether the property needed a variance versus the building inspector had made a determination that it was a special permit. I did some digging. The building inspector did some digging recently. My, I didn't have time, I'm not a title examiner, but I had provided a fair amount of information based on some of the comments that Tim Scott had made about his father selling off the frontage. And there was some question as to whether at one point it was a legally existing lot that over time had the frontage sold off and became conforming. So I provided a fair amount of information. It was reviewed by Joel. Joel came back with a determination that it looked like it was a variance situation. So in that situation, the applicant should be heading to the ZBA first before it comes for site plan review with the planning board. Later this afternoon, building inspector John Field did a little more work, came up with some additional documentation which seemed to indicate that in the 1940s, this lot had frontage via a cart path which met the zoning at the time. So I think Joel has come back with an opinion that it is a special permit process versus a variance process. And therefore, Mr. Wright is heading in the right direction in terms of the process.
That's your opinion?
Yes, and let me elaborate. So it, it turns out that the lot in question, as the facts were presented to me originally, it looked like the lot in question had begun as a larger 20-plus acre lot and shrunk down to the 3.3. But the information that John sent me this afternoon actually begins, the narrative begins differently. The facts begin differently. There was an original lot, and that 1964, I believe it is, A&R Plan has a .98 acre lot. Well, that is the original lot, not the 20 acres, but that's the original lot that was conveyed to Mr. Scott Senior, not the junior, but Senior. And it, and this is in an email I sent probably around 5:50, 30 today. And so that single lot was conveyed to the Scott family, if you will, and together with a right-of-way that got it out to Central Avenue, Boston Post Road. And that lot had, and a house was built on that lot in the early 50s, I think it was. And that lot has continued really independent of the larger 20-acre parcel out of which the conservation land was donated and the frontage lots were carved out and so forth. It begins with the nearly one-acre lot having been conveyed with a house on it, having all of this time having had access via a right-of-way. And I asked John if he was satisfied as to that original house having met the zoning at the time. And he did that analysis and said, yes, he was satisfied. And I looked at his backup documentation and it supported that chronology. And so, you know, when I looked at it originally, that piece had always been missing. It really hadn't been clear how the 42,000 square foot lot fit into the picture. And that was the missing puzzle piece which John provided. So if you begin then with a conforming structure and then take it to the present, it's never lost its conforming, I'm sorry, it lost its conforming status, but it never lost its rights as a non-conforming structure. So as a non-conforming structure, it does have the ability to come and go to the zoning board and apply for a special permit, which means they come here first. And as I say at the tail end of this, the more recent opinion I gave today, should this be questioned, it's going to be the applicant's burden to demonstrate these facts, if you will. I mean, we've, John did a bit of research, Betsy did a bit of research before. I haven't done any research in, I mean factually, I've just relied on the information provided to me. And so should the question be raised, the applicants will have to prove this. But certainly what John provided satisfied me as to the independent standing of that 42,000 square foot lot. The one thing that would remain to be researched in greater detail would be its zoning conformity at that point, but John was satisfied that it is. You know, we take his word for it at this point. So they have the right to apply for a special permit, in my opinion, which puts them before the planning board right now for a site plan review.
So you have an email?
Yes.
To that effect. What we need is for you to write us a letter.
Okay.
That can, that essentially recapitulates that so that we can then attach that to our decision and send it to the zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
And when you write the letter, I don't know, but you may want to confirm some of the things you haven't had a chance to confirm yet completely. I don't know if, I'm not sure, there's, there's one piece in there, the kernel of it is that, you know, verification of that, of the conformity of that initial structure. So your opinion is conditional on the veracity of that. So I can't imagine it would be difficult to confirm it.
I think that's right, yeah. Now, just to be clear, the, and I'm happy to do it. I mean, it's an expense to the town, but I'm certainly happy to do it. It's a question of the, you know, where the burden ultimately lies. I mean, clearly, they have the right to either apply for the special permit or apply for the variance. And whether the zoning board sees fit to grant them one or the other, you know, will be up to the zoning board. The difference it makes for the planning board is the sequence.
Is the sequence. That's why.
When you get it.
That's why we're sort of hung up because.
Right.
If it's a variance, then they go first.
Exactly, yeah.
And just out of curiosity, let's assume that we proceed as though it's a special permit and then they decide it's a variance. Does that mean they have to come back to us?
I guess so. I mean, it, I mean, if the zoning board, I don't know how or why they would do it, but let's just say for sake of discussion that they do.
Yeah.
Then yeah, I guess they'd come back and.
I mean, this is new territory.
Yeah, you would have trod that road before, so you'd go back through it.
Yeah.
Assuming nothing changed, yeah, the answer would be yes, that's how your board reads.
I did talk with John for a while on this, later this afternoon. And we have combed through files in Town Hall to see ZBA files, building files. The only thing that we have that shows an addition put on was something that was submitted by the applicant. We don't have the original building permit data.
So you actually probably couldn't confirm absolutely.
We couldn't find it. We combed the archives, we've.
So it's going to be best information, I guess.
Yes.
And best information suggests it's a, it's a special permit?
Yes.
Okay.
What's the difference between a special permit and the variance? There's one.
There's, there's time council.
Well, there are two answers to that. One is the legal standard, which I'll explain, and the other is the practicality. The legal standard is that it's nearly impossible to meet the legal standards set out in state law for variance, whereas a special permit can freely be granted at the discretion of the board. As a practical matter, my limited experience with the zoning board is that they don't make much of a distinction between the two. They think it's a living project. They seem to grant a variance as willingly as they grant a special permit. But frankly, from the property owner's point of view, if it's challenged, it's a lot more difficult, a whole lot more difficult to defend a variance than it is to defend a grant of a special permit.
I found the research fascinating, quite frankly. It's, it's the growth of.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the key is the cart, the cart access, I meant, the correct, right?
Yeah, right.
Cart path.
Yeah. All right, so with respect to site plan review, there was, we weren't commenting last time because we, our hands were tied, but does it, does any, did you happen to bring by any chance the doc, any of the documents that you presented last time?
I have the plans, the full-size plan, yes.
Just to refresh people's memories. At this point, people might have comments or observations to make on the plans. I remember that one of the comments that Kim made, Kim Turner, her associate designer, was looking for more infill planting at the footpath.
Yep.
In the driveway.
And she continues with that comment.
You've seen these plans, of course.
I haven't.
Oh, you haven't? Oh, okay.
I was happy to look. Might as well.
I only mentioned that I didn't know the site plan itself, but would provide any interest to you.
So both consultants are not here tonight. They have expressed that they've already commented on this project. They have no new information. Dave is fine with the infiltration system as proposed. Kim's comments relate to wanting more infill.
Right in here?
Yes.
In there.
Yes.
And what is she, what kind of infill do you want?
Mainly lower indigenous shrubs.
Lower indigenous shrubs?
Evergreen or?
More, I think more evergreen.
What kind?
Wait a minute, hang on a minute, I'll tell you.
Precise.
Well, this is lower.
I, I. I don't have, I don't have the existing photographs of them now, I'm sorry. Actually, I'm, no, I don't, I don't.
You've been to consultation rooms.
I mean, there's very little to say because you can't see it from anywhere.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, it's, it's not visible from a public way. I find it very refreshing, actually, that it's a contemporary house and not a cookie cutter colonial or shingle style house in this town. And also, they're not taking down one tree. So that's all really great.
No complaints.
Yeah, pretty good.
Joel, this, this is, this is, we don't usually see these, huh?
And there's going to be zebra grass.
There is going to be.
Okay.
Yes, Kim is allowed that.
Kim Turner has stated that.
Did you miss campus?
8:45 Boston Post Road, I would recommend planting a mix of evergreen and deciduous understory shrubs along the trail to provide screening.
Okay, so that's all she says?
That is correct. And she would like to see a new landscape plan that shows the additional plant.
Okay.
Did she recommend?
Yes.
Do you have a recommendation for height that you'd like to see or?
I would, I would refer to her.
Oh, oh, okay.
So I'll just email Kim in the morning and I'll copy you and we'll figure it out.
Okay. And we'll see the linien, the area?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
She's saying just along the trail. I know, but he's talking about the trail, exactly where they want.
I believe.
Right in here.
Right, right, right. Okay. Can you show Joel the existing footprint versus the proposed footprint?
Sure. The blue, the blue represents the existing house. The lower level, first floor, and then a second floor. And this is the area for the zebra grass. Yes, yes. Two foot to zero.
Yes, that's right. Zebra grass in the winter is really pretty good.
We have, oh, it's gorgeous.
I was going to say, one good ice storm, gone.
Well, that, our heavy snow, that, they do, that's a problem, I know, I know.
But they recover in spring.
They do.
Well, no, you have to cut them straight.
Yeah, but grill them aside, yeah.
Cut them straight. It does, yeah.
I have another question for along landscaping. Would like to add. We have bollards, lighting bollards. And she would like to add three more in front of the seven-foot burn. Is that, I'm so far, it's, it's a fixture right here.
Right.
Yeah, and they're 27 inches.
These bollards are, they didn't need sun. 139 lumens. So three would be an additional four, 350, 400?
Oh, okay. Is that, is that, would that be okay to, to show those? I'll maintain the same spacing and she just wanted three more.
You guys okay with adding three more of these bollards along here? It adds about 400 lumens to the total.
Three more where?
Just along that.
I'll maintain, I'll just carry along the existing spacing.
They're nowhere near their total.
No.
And they're downward.
They are 27 inches tall.
So how far apart will they be?
Plow, but plow?
Eight feet or twelve feet. They're not, they're, they're pretty, pretty liberal.
True.
But if you're worried about that, that is getting too long, I can, I can certainly, I'll keep that. She's just worried because sometimes they, this is absolutely.
Oh, yeah, it's the end of the world.
Totally.
Black.
It is. And she was just a little worried about that. And that's, that's the reason why the three bollards are at this location.
We're definitely not closer than eight feet, I would say.
Okay, okay. Our maximum spacing part?
Minimum spacing would be eight feet.
Okay.
Just because you don't want to.
Otherwise, they get too intense.
Three, you might as well spread them out and have them all, I mean, if you're concerned about the fact.
Three more, total of how many?
I think 400 additional lumens.
No, but how many of these bollards?
Seventeen.
I have seven, well, right, seventeen throughout the house.
But they also are off the basket. They're off the patio.
Six.
You said three in that area.
I, well.
Three more.
The bollards are just, they're focused here and then around the patio.
So there's like 10 of them here?
There is. There's three here. Four, I have one.
And they're not, there's not like spotlights under trees.
No, no.
The zebra grass will not be up to that 500 lumens.
You just don't want a plane to mistake it for a runway.
There's a swimming pool with a 500 watt thing in it with rotating colors. I'm thinking of all the other things we had. So those three bollards wasn't good for me.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. Okay, we are enough of a size.
We're sorry you didn't bring the materials.
I do have the materials.
Joel likes to see the materials.
I do have the materials.
Oh, you do?
I didn't have the photographs, but I did bring the materials. Was it, this, the green pochette area is, it's a rhine zinc? And the height is correct, but the length will be about four feet. And then I'm going to break the corners. And then.
But it looks like a clamber.
Yeah. It will, yes.
Well, no, actually, it looks like a shingle.
It overlaps.
So you do see the.
The height.
Yeah.
And then they'll be four feet in length and they'll have random seams, like a running bond almost. But I'm going to, I'm going to break the corners so it's a clean 90 degrees, so there's no trim. And there, you won't see any of this. So they'll, I'll let the gentleman break that all on site, so it's clean and don't have to worry about water.
This, and what kind of wood is this?
Is that EPE?
It is, it is. It technically is. This is, this is a proprietary name through the folks.
So EPE, I use EPE, and so does it fade? Are you going to stain it?
No, we're going to let.
You're going to let it go?
First answer, yes, it does.
Yes.
And the second is, we are not going to stain it. We want it.
So it's very gray tone.
It will, silver gray, right.
And what's the third?
These are the windows proposed.
This is like hardy.
It is hardy board, yes.
And that's the roof, right?
And the low slope roof will be the sarnafil. And then the high roof will be the run.
Because I think you're afraid of the roof.
You're in real trouble.
We do, right. Well, no, close slope.
It's no California.
You know, my clients did, they drove out to the Grokis house.
Oh, right, okay.
And they talked to the conservators there. And you know, Grokis couldn't get financing for that house when he first proposed it. And he met a, he met a lady that owned the apple orchard, talked to her about the house, and she said, I'll loan you the money. Because no bank would give them the money because they said exactly what you said. This is New England, it snows, you can't build a flat roof.
And they had problems with this.
They have, they have.
They had problems.
So this isn't our purview, but I have to say that I personally don't think that this goes for these because these are natural materials. This isn't it. How further has something to say about this?
I wouldn't like get into it.
Natural, but green.
I've used a hard hardy plank before, but you've got to be careful with it.
So do you have to drill that?
It's a wood fire.
Cement.
Yeah, but it's not, but if, if you don't seal all the edges really carefully, water gets in and it tends to kiss the floor up. So you've got to be very careful about how you, you know, what you do. You have to drill the holes and seal the edges and it's got to be care, if you're careful, it's fine, but.
You actually bring up a good point and, and again, this is probably a conversation I didn't expect to get into, but one of the things I, well, you know, today I don't want a phone call 3 o'clock in the morning and have this gentleman be the other end of it. So I'm just, what, what I am doing, from the rhine zinc to the IPE, to the sarnafil people, those folks are going to be on site. They're going to look at the GC's work because I want a warranty, I don't want any problems, and, you know, and I do run into that. If it's installed wrong, all the flashings run around the windows, they've just donated that effort to the job, they're going to take it all down, they're going to redo it again. And it's just the way I run my jobs. And the same thing with the hardy board plank. And John, you bring up a good point. So every time they make a saw cut, they're going to have to stain it, every single cut. And everything is furred out, one by twos, but that, that's no longer going to be an issue because this would, I'm going to be doing in essence a rain screen. And this will be mimicking this, so it will remain in the same plane.
Wait, what's a rain screen architect want?
Well, I mean, you have the water, it's over here. And then the actual siding is held away.
What's the water run down by over the shade behind the siding?
Here is, you get air behind this.
Okay.
Because there's a vent at the bottom and the top and it circulates, so this will dry out or reduce mold and.
Is that going to be a rain screen too or just this?
I'm going to put this on a rain screen, so one by two. Actually, hardy board recommends it under best practices. If you go to the website, you won't see that, but if you talk to their engineers, they, they recommend it under best practices. A little more money, but.
Is that put on nail gun?
It dries it up.
No, I don't.
It has to be drilled.
I, I don't allow nail guns on my site. And I, I get contractors that just, you know, they follow me off the site, still yelling at me. But unless they give me a piece of paper that for 30 years I'm not going to have any issues, then they can use it. Of course, they don't, they think I'm being sarcastic and I'm just not going to allow that, but I'm not. So anyway, that's, that's sort of.
So you drill those and screw those things?
These will all have to be drilled and screwed, yes.
You say you have to pre-drill.
And I'm going to have, I'm going to leave these exposed. You can plug them, but it's. I mean, part of the reason we're doing this is economics. I mean, the first time I ran this thing out, the whole job was EPE, you know, it was almost $250,000 just because of the square footage I have, the lineal footprint is clearly.
This is, this is a EPE?
It is. This, this install.
This I think is going to have battens, right?
Yes, they are.
One by EPE.
Yes, just.
EPE battens?
Yes, yes. But this, this comes in installed. This is $35 a square foot. Not installed material. And, and this runs about $8, a lineal foot, not installed. So this, this really quickly.
And then you have to pre-drill.
This you do have to pre-drill, yeah.
How does that age or issue?
This will age, sort of, it will, exactly.
It's great on a cake.
Mystic seaport, is it down there? It's very rich. It's the same stuff.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
It's a transition kind of.
Is this going to fade too or these are going to, this is going to be against the gray?
This will be mahogany, so it'll, it'll be the same color range. We can put a starter stain on this to pre-crease it, to fade it. You can actually do that now with the IPE, but it just, it just looks a little murky.
It doesn't take that long to.
It doesn't.
It doesn't take that long if you're a new report.
And if you're in full sun.
In your full sun. This is in the woods.
Right, it'll, each side will have a little different coloration to it.
It doesn't really have a lot of trees on the house. Yeah, but it's like the mold and the moss and the humidity, it does change. I mean, you know, people put up that white cedar siding around here and it never looks like it looks, it always looks moldy and black.
Well, this is great.
Yes, we love it. This is the most fun kind of planning board is I can't tell you.
The camera's rolling, I suppose, right?
Yes, it is.
Ah, my neck goes off. I'm just glad you're all in a good mood. I'll leave it that way.
Okay.
So I'm going to wait from, you submitted a letter at 5:30, is that, and then do I? What am I waiting for right now? Site plan approval from you folks?
Do we want to continue this to the 17th and then I'll have a draft decision?
And we'll review the decision, vote on it, and that's, that's the end of us. And then you go to the zoning board of appeals.
But you're going to put a landscape plan in?
Yes.
Oh, prior to that date?
Yes.
And get it.
We can advance that date.
Enough in advance, like a week, so that.
Oh, that's fine, I could, okay.
Kim sees that and signs off.
Sure. Can I just do that as an independent sheet or do I have to re-submit?
Well, talk to Kim.
Boy, right on time, Bob.
Okay, I'll do that.
Wait, we have somebody else who just.
Thank you for your interesting comments and.
So thank you.
This is what Joel tried to do.
Yeah, so you do have to get that in.
Thank you for bringing that up.
I think we can release you, but unless you want to hang around and listen to other.
I can just, I'm.
You know something? You, you actually, it might be worth while hanging around anyway for Ward Avenue.
I'll be sending myself in.
Ward Avenue, trying to discuss, just, there might be some issues to come up in connection with rights of gray adjustments, that kind of thing. So, yeah, maybe it's a good idea to hang around. They're just, they're just after Cherry Brook here, so.
Is there a time on the 17th? I'm sorry.
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock, okay.
Eight, eight-thirty, somewhere in there.
On the whole day.
Good luck.
If you get that stuff in and she writes the thing, I mean, you don't actually have to be here for it.
Oh, really?
We'll just read it.
I mean, what I'll do is I'll, you give me, I'll email, you'll get me the plan, I'll write a decision, I'll send it to all of your crew. And then if you have any issues, you know, we'll hash it out.
Okay. But for the time being marked on my calendar, the 17th to the 8th.
Right, the 17th.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.